Wednesday's or Thursdays and she's not sure who or she's not sure exactly when.
Okay. Good afternoon, John.
Oh, John.
Hey, everyone. All right, well, we'll give it a little bit more time. I know there'll be other people jumping on. We'll see who we got together here. We got Thomas and Jim and Matt, Frank, great.
So, John, you just put this together this past week, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I sat down and the, actually, the hardest part was really selecting. I had been looking at some of this stuff a while back and thinking about it as a class. And so it had already been running through my mind. And then when we started doing this online Bible study stuff and thinking, oh, that could be a possible class. So I had done some work, I guess, you know, kind of in the past, but the hardest part is, is really trying to pick the seven people. Because there's so many.
I know we'll learn, but is anybody still living, or are they all?
Uh, no, none of them are living anymore.
Okay.
Yeah, all of them are.
Nobody who's living is qualified, or?
No, no, um, and I'll tell how I, later, once we get going, how I, you know, chose these, these seven guys. It wasn't easy, and I went back and forth on a lot of them. And maybe we'll, you know, have another class at another time and pick another seven or something, you know? Because there are so many that have contributed so much. And we could do even, you know, people that are living. Like, for example, I don't know if you guys heard, but Ravi Zachariah passed away, and he was a very big Christian apologetics. And unfortunate to lose him because he was, you know, top of line stuff. And it's interesting because I think, I don't know, like a month or two ago, I heard that he had gotten a diagnosis of cancer. So apparently that went pretty, pretty fast. But li- I, I watch a lot of it. I've read his books. I've watched a lot of his videos. He's probably the best apologist that, you know, we've had that was living. And, and good, good stuff. So if you haven't looked into him, then, you know, take some time because he really, really does stuff and is very helpful. Just to take on some of the things that are, you know, good to know and think about as far as when people are skeptical about Christianity or question the faith, you know? So, hey, Paul.
Hi, how you doing? We're starting a new one today, right?
Mm-hmm.
Starting a new study today.
Yep, we're gonna start a new study today. I think you're gonna love this. It's gonna be right up your alley, buddy. You should be teaching this class.
What, real estate? Sorry, I've never heard from that.
No, no, you got it, man, you know. Paul knows a lot about the era, particularly the era that we're gonna be in in the first couple of weeks. So I'm sure you can fill us in on a lot of good stuff. I'm looking forward to that.
That's, that's assuming any of my brain cells still work.
Matt, how's it going, man?
Hey, doing real well. This, this Bible stuff happened to fit in between some things I've got going on today, some meetings. So I thought I'd, I'd drop in and say hello and.
Cool. Yeah, right on. So also, we've got a Saturday morning every other week, so not this coming Saturday, but next Saturday, just a men's get together. And that's kind of been led by Ken Moffett. So, yeah, you know, you can get in on that if you want.
Yeah, send us the link.
Uh, yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, I'm trying to think. Did I send it out in an email blast? I can't remember, actually.
No, we haven't seen.
Yeah, I think Ken is, uh, Ken took this on.
Yeah.
Just, I think he was feeling a little disconnected and wanted to rally some guys together. I think it was a pretty ad hoc thing. He thought it up last Wednesday and then, and then had, just, I think there were only nine guys on the call on, on Saturday. So, uh, yeah, I, I don't know how he's gonna expand it other than word of mouth. If you're interested, shoot Ken an email, uh, you know, give him a call or something. But not, not really like official church men's ministry or anything, more like just an action from Ken himself to try and, I think, just reach out and connect with guys, something I think he felt like he was missing himself.
Yeah, yeah, good.
So the link would be helpful, please.
Okay, cool. Hey, Mike.
Yeah, hi. Made it.
Yeah.
And I have to cut out at 2:30 if I get a call from my broker, so.
Okay, okay. We don't want you to miss that call.
Oh, not these days.
That's for sure. So I was at the food drive this morning with my truck, and I'll be back there tomorrow, I think. Mike, are you gonna be there tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm gonna be there tomorrow. I was, I was supposed to do the truck thing tomorrow, but.
Well, no problem. It's just that we didn't get a lot of people. It's kind of dying out. I think at that time, we should probably do it like one period of time, you know, per month or something.
I agree.
A little bit more interest in it. But, so I've got food in my truck, but it didn't fill it up that much. So I'll just bring it back, and we can just keep building on it.
Okay, and I'll just add it to the truck load that I, that I take to Solutions tomorrow after it's over.
Yeah, yeah, cool.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'll be there.
All right. Well, let's, okay, let's get started then. Let's have a word of prayer, shall we? Let's pray together. Father, I'm grateful for everyone on this call. I'm thankful that despite all that goes on, we can still meet together and study and think about the history of your church and people who took their Christian, men in particular, who took their Christianity, their faith seriously, and tried to make a contribution to the church. And we're, we give thanks for them, and we know that we're, you know, we receive that heritage from them, and our faith is stronger because of their work. And Lord, make us mindful that that's the same with us, that we can pass our faith on to the next generation. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, so, uh, yeah, most of you guys probably know all the Zoom etiquette, but I always like to go over that. If you put your cursor up on the screen, you'll see a little bar at the bottom, at least if you're on the computer. It might be different on your phone. But anyway, there's a little bar that comes up on the bottom, and to the very left side is a little old-style microphone, and you can mute yourself that way. Uh, and usually that's the best thing to do unless, you know, then when you want to make a comment, just unmute yourself, and that way we don't pick up a bunch of noise from all over the place. Uh, so that's kind of the, I think y'all probably understand that already, but I like to go through that a minute just to keep things clean and going. And, you know, I don't know, some of you may not realize, but you can use the spacebar on your, uh, you know, yeah. And that also will temporarily unmute you. So I often do that if I'm not leading the meeting. So another way of doing it. All right, so. Yeah, we're gonna take a look here in seven sessions. They won't be that long. Uh, you know, I'm not sure we'll even go an hour. It just depends on discussion and so forth. But at least we'll have a little time together. And looking at seven people that, that I chose in particular, who changed the world because of their Christian faith. And, and I tried to pick people who, you know, like I mentioned in the prayer, that, that gave us a certain heritage of our belief. Uh, and, uh, yet are a little bit connected too, so you can see. So, so this study will be also based, of course, in, in history, because these people were in history and made a, made an impact on the historical movement of the church and, and the historical movement of theology, which slowly began to develop over time. Uh, so that's really where I focused. And so the seven, then, and I tried to pick some that you'll probably know well, uh, and then some that were not known as well, but still had quite a contribution. The first one, and we'll look at him today, is Clement of Rome. And then, and I tried to start from, uh, you know, from the first century into the first century on up to modern time, uh, which is quite an expanse, obviously. And when you only got seven choices to pick from, you know, but, but then, okay, so the other thing I looked at then was, all right, in that one area of time, I chose this person because they made the greatest impact or a larger impact for us. So that's kind of my, my thinking of that. And so the second person I chose was Augustine, or some of you may know him as Saint Augustine. Uh, and so we'll look at him, and then Thomas Aquinas. And then one that you might not be as familiar with, and that's Meno Simons. Uh, and then another that you might not be familiar with, but he had some very interesting things to say and do and, and influence on the church and more movement into the Anglican Church. The other guys were the development of really the Catholic Church, building up to the Protestant Reformation. Then, of course, we have that branch that branches off into the English Anglican Church, and that name is Richard Hooker. He had some things to do there. And then I moved over to the New World, uh, to move us to the New World and the Reformation and all that. And I took Jonathan Edwards, great preacher and powerful speaker, lots of good stuff there. And we'll, and we'll look at some other people around these guys that influenced them. So we'll, we'll pick up a few people along the way. And, and then finally ended with Dietrich Bonhoeffer. I thought he would be a good one for more modern times, of course. That takes us into World War II. Uh, but anyway, so, anyway, those are the seven. And, uh, there's so many more. Good, good stuff, too. I mean, you know, we could teach another class and hit some of the other folks, too, because I, it really was hard to try to stay on, you know, who, who am I gonna go with? Oh, this guy's good, too. Oh, they should hear about this or whatever. But, you know, we can't do everything. But I think you'll find it, it interesting. So, so those are the seven guys we're gonna take a look at and see how they really changed the world through their, their Christian faith. And in so doing, can hopefully, I think, motivate us as men to be thinking about what we can contribute and how we can make an impact and our influence, you know, in, in our sphere of influence around us. So the first guy I chose was Clement of Rome. How many of you have, have heard of this guy? Couple. Okay, good. So about three guys. Yeah, you know, um, and he's, he's, uh, you know, he set the tone. He's, he planted a lot of seeds, both good in what became kind of not on his own fault, but kind of out of the circumstance that didn't work out too well for the church. Uh, but anyway, uh, and he's, to me, the reason I picked them is he's really the, uh, the bridge from, from the, you know, very beginnings of Christianity into the first steps away from the apostles. And a lot of people don't realize that there is a connection there for some reason. And maybe that's the way it's been taught or whatever the case might be. But it seems like, people say, okay, you got the early church and you have Acts and everything. And then, you know, once John dies around 90 AD, then there's like this hundred or so year gap, and then we started talking about the church. And there wasn't any gap. It, it continued to build, and we're, you know, we'll, we'll see that. And Clement of Rome was one of the guys who was that bridge from the time of the apostles into the, you know, what would be really considered the early church, you know, and its development in a new stage. And that's why I wanted to take that and see that. Now, if you have your Bibles and you turn to Philippians 4:3, and here's where, you know, where the tie is, uh, Philippians, chapter four, verse three. And in this passage, Paul is mentioning some people that, uh, well, in verse two as well, but he's mentioning people who had really helped them and supported his ministry. Uh, and if you go to three, it says, "Indeed, true companion, I ask you also to help these women who have shared my struggle and the cause of the gospel." So that's interesting that Paul, uh, here mentions a couple of women that were very helpful, or some women that were helpful, that also places them on the same level of leadership in the church. You know, so that's interesting, that Paul places on the same level of leadership. "Together with Clement, also in the rest of my fellow workers whose names are in the book of life." And so that comment is the comment we're talking about. Now, there are some scholars who say, well, you know, we're not so sure about that, and that may not be the same comment as this guy who became a bishop in Rome. But that could be true. I choose to believe that it is, and that that's the connection that we take from, uh, from what became the canonical scriptures, the scripture we have today into, uh, the, you know, the early church. So he's, he's that bridge. Uh, but I, I'm, you know, I want you guys to know, there are some scholars who say, well, they don't think he is. And, okay, but, uh, but I do. And so, you know, he becomes our, our connection. So.
Do you have a, do you have a timeframe for this guy?
Yeah, so he was, uh, well, he was the overseer of the Church of Rome, uh, starting at about 90 AD. And that's one of the reasons why I, I hold to him as being the same Clement that Paul mentions.
Okay.
Uh, also, he wrote, and we'll get into some more of that as we move along, but he also wrote about forty years after Paul to the Corinthian church. You know, Paul wrote, of course, the epistles to the Corinthians. And then Clement again wrote to the Corinthian church forty years later. Uh, so anyway, there's, so that being some, some ties, I guess, that make me think, that support the idea that this Clement is the same one mentioned in Philippians 4:3.
So was he a pope?
Well, not technically. Uh, they hadn't gotten to that point yet.
Okay, but if you look back, starting with Peter and going forward, is he on the list?
Yeah, he would be. Uh, and, and, and actually, he's on that list because he created the list, you know, I mean, or he started the list. He started.
Yeah, well, they, they were bishops in those days. Uh, the Catholic Church will tell you that, that it, uh, it's, they were all popes going right back to, uh, right back to Peter. But in fact, they were just bishops, because you remember, uh, Christianity was illegal then. It was an illegal religion being stamped out, and they were generally on the run. And so Clement was just like the local, um, head of his group, you know, the local, um, they, today, they call it a bishop. Uh, in those days, it was more of a Latin word, like presbyter, and, um, and that's what, that's what they were. Uh, but to think that he was a pope with the special hat and all that kind of stuff that you had in the Middle Ages, that, that, that's not true.
Yeah, the church hadn't developed to that point yet. Um, but, no, you're exactly right. So, uh, he was called the bishop, but that word bishop, or sometimes translated overseer, I don't know how many of you are watching my, uh, my Bible study on Sundays on First Timothy, because First Timothy, Paul in writing to Timothy uses that same word, overseer, which has also been translated bishop or elder or presbyter. Uh, those are all interchangeable, all the same. Now, the church in Rome, you know, different churches took on significance, power, you know, in the, in terms of being influential. And, uh, the movement of the church as it grows and develops moves from Jerusalem, which was very central, to the very, very early beginnings of the church, because most of the disciples were in Jerusalem, and it was the influential church. But as the church and Paul's ministry, you know, the completion of Paul's ministry, that kind of flipped, because Paul had opened the church up into the Gentiles and throughout, of course, Roman government, which, of course, at that time, the seat of power in the Roman government was Rome. And so the church that was started in Rome, uh, then grew to be pretty significant and pretty influential, and probably, uh, greater influence than the church in Jerusalem. So that kind of, you know, flipped, flipped over a little bit. And Clement found himself as the overseer or bishop or presbyter elder of that church. And, uh, and we know he was significant because he wrote to Corinth, the same church that Paul had wrote to, as I mentioned about forty years earlier, uh, to talk about some things. And that only shows that, uh, you know, if he were to do that, that he'd have to be a pretty influential guy. I mean, why would, otherwise, why would they listen to this guy? Uh, he wasn't in Corinth. He wasn't involved in the Corinth church, Corinthian church, but, uh, but yet he still talked to him about the problems that they were having in that church. So that shows that, uh, they looked to Rome, the Roman, the church in Rome, and particularly the person who oversaw the church in Rome, as a pretty important piece, uh, you know, influential person. And, and Clement saw himself that way and, and, you know, started writing that way. So, uh, yeah, no, you're, you're exactly right. So you have the apostolic period. That's when the apostles around, obviously, around 30 AD or so, uh, up until about 90 AD, when John died, the last of the apostles. Uh, and then we have what's called the post-apostolic period, which starts around 90 and moves on to 250, something like that. Uh, and then after 300 for sure, uh, and moving into really 400 years, uh, the church was pretty well-established, had a bureaucracy. The, the, uh, the canon was closed and, uh, you know, and well, we're, we're on, on our way. Um, but anyway, uh, so everyone that found themselves in this post-apostolic period, right after the disciples were, and that were influential, were called either the apostolic fathers or the early church fathers. I don't know if you've ever heard that term. But if you hear that, if you hear, well, apostolic fathers or early church fathers, they're talking about some men who had been, in many cases, uh, discipled by the disciples, okay? They may not have known Jesus personally or, or interacted with him personally, but they did, they had known the disciples, and now were, you know, as the disciples had died off, now took a leadership role in the early church across, you know, the whole Roman empire. And they became known as the early church fathers. And they, and they wrote books, which we have today that are still with us, and Clement was one of them. He's one of the early church fathers. And, uh, you know, as I said, that's probably the guy mentioned in Ephesians there. Uh, and although even, um, the apostolic fathers, their writings never got a, became a part of the canon, I think they are also, uh, very important for our understanding of where the church was in that point in history. And, um, so actually, there's different writings of the apostolic fathers, early church fathers, which you can, you can get, you can buy. I don't have my copy. Here are my copy. I have, I do have a copy. It's in the church office. But anyway, I'll try to get it next week for us. But you can get it. And, uh, and one of the books in it is the, uh, the Epistle of Clement. And so Clement wrote, uh, and his epistle, the letter that he wrote, was to the church in Corinth. And, uh, and that was, uh, you know, very helpful to us to see where he was at. And it established some, some thinking in the church that later gets built on and, and developed. So, uh, in his writing, in his epistle, we see that the church acknowledged some really foundational Christian truths that weren't fully developed yet, but we see that these people still believed it. So, for example, in Clement's letter, we find that he was, um, triotic in formula. In other words, he believed in God the Father and God the Son, God the Holy Spirit. The church wasn't using the word Trinity at the time. It hadn't been, you know, it hadn't come up, it hadn't been that part of it. But, but people certainly understood that God was three modes, you know, which later, of course, gets worked out in all of the early church diets of all the, you know, different synods that they pooled together to, to hammer this stuff out. Uh, but we know then that in the earliest time period, in the very beginning of the church, they understood and believed that God was in the form of a Trinity. And I think that's, that's one of the important things that, that Clement shows us in his writings to, to Corinth there. Uh, the other thing that I thought was interesting and important in the, in doctrine and teachings, and that was that Clement, uh, certainly held and believed in Christ, uh, the death of Christ was for salvation. So that salvation could only come through Christ's death. So here's another very important doctrine of the church and teaching of the church that he held to and believed and had an understanding of. Even though it wasn't fully formed yet, uh, Paul had written, of course, uh, his magnum opus there, the Book of Romans, um, which, you know, which Pastor Brian's taking a look at in his, uh, in his sermon series. But, um, but we, we know that that got across to the church, and it was very important to Clement, and he, he, he believed it and he used it, you know, he applied it. And I think that's, uh, that was what, what was important, even though all of the dynamics of it probably hadn't been worked on, wouldn't be worked out for another couple of hundred years. Uh, and, you know, if you study church history, you know that a lot of that was formed by, by heresy, everything that wasn't orthodox or truthful. People would teach certain things, and then the church had to decide, is that really what we believe or not? We have to make a decision about that. And it forced the church to begin to really kind of focus in on its, uh, its theology and its teachings. But in the very early beginnings here with Clement, we do see that some of these basic things were accepted and used and thought and believed. Uh, so his main contribution, of course, is his writing to the Corinthians church. And as I mentioned, he wrote forty years after Paul wrote, he wrote on the same issues that Paul wrote. So, you know, the more you study about the church, whether it's, you know, the church in Ephesus, that Timothy was the overseer, the elder at, uh, whether it's Corinth, you know, or many other churches, it seems like there, you know, some of the same problems, uh, that just kind of naturally bubble up in the church. And we can see in our own church that that could be a problem. We have to be very, very careful of it. And the number one thing that, and it really affected Clement, and he sets the tone then for the next, you know, couple of centuries, uh, about threats to the unity of the church. He was super concerned. I guess in Corinth, uh, there was an issue about some younger men who were not happy with the elders who were older, and it'd be different decisions. And actually drove those men out of the church and out of positions of leadership and took control. And, uh, whether they were teaching something theological, you know, theologically correct or not, Clement wrote to say that's not right, and you, you have to, uh, you know, first of all, he was concerned about the crisis of leadership then and what was going on in that whole thing. Uh, and, uh, and he, he urged the church to find unity in Christ. You gotta go back to Christ if you want your church to be unified, and you have to be unified in Christ. Uh, and he, uh, so he urges them to do that, and he calls those young guys, the troublemakers, uh, to repent of that sin, of the way that they handled the situation and how they drove those other leaders out, uh, and then, and then to submit to those older men, to submit to the, the leadership that was in the church. So pretty, pretty strong stuff. But, um, shows us that, you know, even in 90 to 100 AD, in a church that just really getting its feet on the ground, still trying to find its way in this Roman world of, you know, that it was living in, unity was a problem. And there were things happening within the church that was causing all kinds of, uh, division and controversy and problems. So even from the very start, and we see that certainly in, in Paul's writing, I mean, good grief, look at, you know, what we're studying now on, on Sundays with, with Timothy. The church in Ephesus was a disaster. It was a mess. And, uh, you know, he had to take on a pretty heavy program. And so here, we continue to see that. Uh, and maybe that's one of the things I think about in terms of, uh, you know, when you get to heaven and you want to ask God some questions, you know, why in the world did you design the church this way? Because it always seems to be controversial. There's always problems going on, you know. But anyway, that's just a side point there, I guess. But.
The implication here, John, is that Paul gave directions to, and corrections to the Corinthians. And then forty years later, Clement's having to do the same thing.
Yeah.
So they hadn't fixed any of that stuff, whatever.
Yeah, or they got back, you know, if they corrected it from what Paul had told them, they got off base again and had to be re-corrected. And there, so, you know, one of the things that tells us about churches, about the church. Is that you always have to be on your game. And, and part of leadership is about, you know, making course corrections and getting people back to the truth and, and the way it should be. That is just the nature of the church. And I remember reading about vision leadership. And, and the thought was that you have to make sure that the church understands the vision at least every twenty-eight days. So every twenty-eight days at least, okay? Every twenty-eight days, you have to have, you have to be stating the vision back out to the church. Or it will have what they call vision drift, right? The church begins to drift away from its focus and vision. I thought that was pretty interesting insight. But then when you think about marketing, you know, look at how many commercials, you know, the same commercial just bombards you over and over and over again. I mean, that's, you know, the same idea, they have, just keep putting it in your, in your mind. What, what they want you to do or what they want you to see and be. And so we have to keep doing that.
So John, would, would the, would the forty year time span be a generational thing? You know, you look at the forty years in the, in the desert. And it was a new generation and, and it's, you look at, you look at us with our sons and daughters and the new generations. And they obviously don't do things the way we would, but, but it's a generational thing.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some validity to that, certainly. Every generation that comes up in the church, you know, has to relearn and know and come to understand, you know, what, what the church is. And he was concerned about that, actually, and that's the second thing that he does. And this is the seed of the idea that he places in the church. That it got a little way, not a little, it actually got pretty far from what his initial concept was. But, you know, he was, he's, Clement is really the guy that plants the first seed of what later becomes known as apostolic succession. Which is what we were just talking about earlier, you know, with the Catholic Church saying, well, you know, all of our popes go all the way directly back to St. Peter. And it was really Clement who had the idea that because of what was happening in Corinthian church. To say, okay, now wait a minute. You have to remember what's really important is you've got Jesus. Jesus recruited his disciples and trained them. And then the disciples trained us, you know, as, as apostolic fathers or early church fathers. And we are then, and put us into leadership by the laying on of hands, you know, the ordination. And then our job is to find that leadership and train them and lay our hands on them. And, and that has to be successive all the way through. Which isn't a bad idea because he felt like when you do that, you keep the truth where it needs to be. You know, you keep the focus where it needs to be. Now unfortunately, what, how he applied it to the church is what got out of hand, I guess. And he took an Old Testament idea and tried to apply it to the New Testament church. So he took the idea of priests, a royal priesthood, you know, the priesthood in the Old Testament. And they had the whole tribe of Levi, that that was their job, right? You know, the priests always came out of the tribe of Levi. They were the intercessors between God and the, and their. And so he's actually the first person to coin the term laity against, you know, over against, you know, the clergy. And he said, you know, so his idea, what he was creating was, okay, there has to be this priesthood that really is educated, knows what has to happen and, and does that ministry. Unfortunately, I think things got wider than what he, what he was trying to say. It wasn't really the best analogy to use or try to apply. Anyway, he did. And, and the case was that now what happened is all of a sudden, as the church grew. That distance between laity and clergy began to grow. And, and it goes all the way to the Reformation. In the sense that only the priest has the ability to interpret scripture. Only the priest has the ability to preach or understand God's work, you know, and all the things of that brought about the Reformation. And so he's planting the seeds of that. Now, whether, I don't think that was his objective. I, I think he would have turned over in his grave, right? If he had seen, you know, by the Reformation time, what, what became of that. I don't think that was the key. He was simply trying to establish unity and how important that unity was in the church. And of course, some people took it. I guess he's, he illustrates the danger of saying something that then is picked up by others and taken far beyond what was originally intended, right? You know, that wasn't his thought at all. And this happens continually in the flow of the history of the church. But, and so then we had to have a course correction in the church by the Reformation. It was Martin Luther who said, you know, who coined, you know, the priesthood of all believers. Not just the high priest, not just us as priests, you know. But that all believers are, are a priest, all of us are in the high priesthood. We can all interpret scripture and come to an understanding. God can use all of us in our gifts and all the rest of the stuff that came out of the Reformation. So anyway, that's, that's where he was at. I think his primary concern was, you know, preserving the unity of the church. And, and really the, the importance of local church leadership. That's what he was trying to do by applying this, you know, concept to the church. And all for the sake of, of biblical truth and, and biblical unity. That, that was what he really wanted. You know, the, the rest of it got out of hand by others as it went down the cycle. But his contribution was really, hey, let's preserve the unity of the church. And, and remember the importance of local church leadership. That's what's key. And I think that's what he, he gave to us. And, and what we can take away as men in our church and in our church community. To remember that, you know, we, we have to work on unity, whatever that takes to be unified in Christ. And then second, we have to respect the leadership that God has given to us. You know, I think that's another thing that contributed. All right, so that's the study I'm just putting out there. And any comments or questions, discussion?
I, I for one, I have to admit, I mean, I know, I know Clement's name, but it's not somebody I knew very much about, so.
Right. Getting back to what the Corinth thing, I think what Paul was, possible Paul was more concerned about with Corinth is the sexuality problem in the early church. They, the early Corinthians didn't want to give up Athena. And all the things that were going on with that whole sexual thing in Corinth. Corinth was like, like a Las Vegas on the, on the ocean. Whereas Clement, he was really concerned more, like you said, the unity. But I think he was trying to take it a step further. What he wanted to do is that he wanted to be able to, and us as reformed Christians, you know, we don't like this idea. But what he wanted to do is that a, a, a power structure. That he wanted to have someone else pick the leadership of your church, okay? And so the young guys were throwing out the old guys. But today, in our, you know, in, in sense of Reformation, we get to choose our leaders, okay? But Clement wouldn't have been for that at all. The fact that we can elect, you know, our presbyterians, elect our elders, elect our deacons. Clement, he wouldn't have gone for that. And so, so, so he was starting to establish the early layers of, of, of the power structure of the Roman Catholic Church. To say, no, we're here in Rome, we can tell you who your leaders are. And, and so in that, like you said, that continued all, you know, and it accelerated, you know, more and more and more. And it, you know, really accelerated by the fourth century with, when Christianity became legal.
Oh, good point.
So if you're, so if you're, if you're Martin Luther or you're John Calvin, you would say Clement is a, is a no-go. And whereas, whereas if you're a Roman Catholic, you're gonna say, hey, he's, you know, he's.
He's the man.
Good. He's the man.
Well, that's why I think we need to focus on what his, you know, primary concerns were with, with the church. Not only just with the Corinthian church, but with church as a whole. And, and that is, first of all, that we need to preserve the unity of the church in Christ. And that that becomes a focus for us. And, and I think that's a good focus because, gosh, you know, when you, when you look at this. I mean, that church in Corinth, both with Clement and then, you know, in the Bible with Paul more. You, you think about the church in Ephesus with Timothy. A lot of it had to do with, with unity and dissension in the church and how to deal with the conflict, you know. So, okay, you know, that's one of the things about the church being a human institution, really, you know. And so, all right, that being the case, then we really have to be on our toes to deal with the issues soon. To learn how we can be conflict mediators, you know, and resolve conflict in biblical ways. To, to be open ourselves to times when we might need to repent. And with our other brothers and sisters in the faith and to do that, so there's healing in the church. You know, all those things become so important when you, you know, when you look at the history of the church.
So the only problem with the church is, is made up of a bunch of people, huh?
Yeah, they just leave the people out of it. It'd be perfect, right? You know, yeah. And, you know, now Clement doesn't write as much about this as, as Paul did to Timothy. But definitely in, in Timothy, we see that Paul was very concerned not only about what was happening in the church. But that what was happening in the church, how it would be perceived by those outside the church. And, and I think that has to be a concern for us and, and is one of the unfortunate black eyes the church has had over its history. But I think a lot too, even in our own time. And that is that people don't see that kind of unity within the church. And that they have a very negative aspect of Christianity because of it. Well, let's, let's apply this to us as men in our church, our B community church, you know. You know, how can, how can we apply this? What, what can we do as men to address, you know, the concerns that, that Clement had?
Well, I think that, you know, we, you have to have a structure within the church or you have to have, you have to have leadership. I mean, you have your elders and we vote our elders in every so often and our deacons and things like that. And, and they make decisions, right or wrong, you may not like the decisions that they make. But I think you have to, you have to go with it. You know, assume that elders make a decision on something, you know, that. You may love it, you may not like it, you may be neutral, but you have to support it. And that's what creates unity. I mean, that's what the military is, the government is, that's what a church is. And, and the only thing that we were, we would differ with Clement is that we wouldn't want to have, like, for example, the Methodist. Their bishop would tell you who your senior pastor is. And, and whether you like it or not, that's, that's what you get. And you know, same thing with the Roman Catholic Church or the Greek Orthodox. You just simply be assigned your clergy. And one of the great things that Martin Luther did for us is that we can pick our own clergy, you know. You know, and, and so, so there's a little bit of a break there. But I think it's important that what we do is we support our, our leaders, we have to support our deacons, we have to support our elders.
Good, good insight, Paul. Yeah, thank you. Anything else?
One of the things I got out of your discussion, John, was that, that we need to be in a position to bridge the transitions that are going on. And, and people that are, that are maybe moving away from the church. Provide a vehicle where we can, by the way we live our lives and, and also interact with them, maybe bring them back into it. So it's, I gotta get, get back to that generational thing that I mentioned earlier.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, that's very good insight. Very important. Good. Yeah, what a wonderful thing that we could contribute to the church. And just think of all of the men in our church, you know, really focused on that. I think that'd be, that'd be great. Anything else? All right, well, let's, let that simmer here and, and then next week, we're gonna go to Augustine, Saint, good old Saint Augustine. He's got some interesting ideas and things that took place in his life. We'll take a look at that, add that to all of this stuff. So, well, I'm sure glad you guys took the time to, to come together and join me in this study. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, let me, let me pray us out. Let's pray together. Well, thank you for, for Clement of Rome. We give thanks for his commitment. And we're mindful of the influences and bridges that we can play in our own church. And we ask, Lord, that your Holy Spirit might be upon us and help us to understand how best to do that. Rather, we pray that there might be continued unity in our church. And that our church might, because of our ministries, all of our men's ministries and all of us as men. Might find that continued unity because we focus on the Lord Jesus. We pray this all in Jesus's name. Amen. All right, guys, next week, same time, same channel.